Counsel, I appreciate the motion, but we don't have the record. So, we have nothing to approve. We'll have that at the next meeting. This meeting is being televised live on Cable Channel 9 and is being taped by PBD Access TV and is also being recorded by our city council stenographer. Counselors, we are going to move to item 7A on the agenda. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Counselors. Nice to be with you. Very happy to be here today for the introduction of our -- the city's new disability commission. You may recall back in May, earlier this year, I came to you with a request for adoption of a couple of Mass General laws. The first was to adopt Mass General laws, Chapter 40, Section 8J, which was to create the City's Commission on Disability. The second vote was to adopt Mass General laws, Chapter 40, Section 22G, which allowed for the collections of fines from handicap parking to be able to be utilized by the city in efforts to better handle illegal handicap parking, which has been an issue. The third step was to appoint members to the committee. We've been working with David Darkangelo, who works for -- he's the director of the State Disability Commission, asking for recommendations as to the makeup and composition of the committee. And upon his advice, I think we've put forward an excellent group of concerned citizens that'll do a great job for us on these important issues. I did want to introduce, and I put forward into your packet, the nine members of the Disability Commission. The recommendation from Mr. Darkangelo was to have five members of the community who are disabled, have one member of the community who is a family member to a person who's disabled, and then to have three city officials, and one of those cities officials to be an elected official. So, I've presented to you today a list of nine individuals. Alan Frost, a gentleman that lives at 14 Tammy Lane. Kayla Bentis, I think everybody knows Kayla, 11 Lennox Road. Erica Barrett, 16 Cedar Grove Ave. Mr. Tony Purcell, 16 Crown and Shield Ave, number 210. Karen Cahill, 7 Norfolk Ave. Tom Muxey, 5 Forest Street. Beth Brennan O'Donnell is our Human Resources Director. She is our appointed ADA coordinator for the city. Tom Gould, everybody knows Tom's work with the Challenger Program in the city, would be our elected representative. And then Dan Terrenzoni from the Building Inspector's Office. Those will be the nine voting members on all issues. However, we will have a number of other representatives from the city take part in the meetings. They just won't be voting. At the meetings, we will have a representative from the PBD Police Department. We will have a representative from the Department of Public Works. And then we will also have a representative from the Council on Aging will be a part of those meetings, as well as anybody else from the public that would like to take part and be a part of the committee. Very happy to have a couple of the members here today, Mr. Muxey and Mrs. Cahill. Tom Muxey, many of you know, has been an integral part of the work that we did on the New Higgins Middle School. He was a part of the school building committee and played a crucial role in a fabulous project we have over there. And I expected him to be one of the leaders of the committee. And Karen Cahill was on the committee previously. Tom, how long ago was it? Maybe seven or eight years ago? About seven, eight, Karen? Yep. So, the committee has been not active since that time. Both Tom and Karen were on that at the time, along with Mr. Purcell. So, it's great to have their institutional knowledge as part of the group. So, very happy to bring this forward. Our first meeting is going to be October 13th. It's a Thursday, and that's at four o'clock here in the Wigan Auditorium. At that time, we'll set the agenda. We'll set up a schedule for future meetings, and I'll start to get into these really important topics. And I'm very happy to bring forward those names for approval today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Sinowitz, can I have a motion under suspension of the rules to receive item 7A?
Mr. President, move under suspension of rules to receive item 7A.
Counselors, hear the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you, Counsel Sinowitz. Would any of these new appointees like to address the council? See a little apprehension there, possibly?
Oh, here we go, Tom.
Mr. Muxey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Just want to thank everybody for their support in getting the new council together. I think it's a great opportunity with everybody that I know the mayor's and Beth have been put quite a bit of work into getting this whole committee together and getting some great members from all disciplines that can have some great feedback. So, looking forward to it and making things better for the city and for businesses. And I think that also goes for the identity of PBD. Hopefully, we'll -- PBD will become a place to come where people with disabilities can feel that accessibility isn't a problem, and in that turn brings more business, maybe downtown and hotels and stuff like that. So, I know there -- I have a lot of things rattling around my head that I'd like to get going on. So, I'm looking forward to working with everybody and appreciate it. And appreciate all the members that decided to join. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Muxey. Anybody else? Seeing none, do I have a motion from the floor? Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move approval of the list of appointees to the -- let's see what the official -- our official title is here. The Commission on Disability, as recommended by His Honor, the Mayor. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion -- on the motion, Counsel Manning-Martin.
Yes, thank you. If I could just take the opportunity to raise the issue of that stencil, Mayor, for the International Symbol of Access. All right. Thank you. You were ready. You were ready this time. Excellent. I'm so pleased with that. So that we have all this new paving, all the great work that's gone on downtown, we can start fresh with the appropriate, up-to-date symbol of access, International Symbol of Access. So, that's really, really exciting. And also, I was wondering, at the Higgins, I don't believe the marking is at the Higgins.
Let me check on that.
If you could check on that so that we could start that fresh, too. That would be stupendous. Thank you very much, Mayor, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Counsel Manning-Martin. Roll call on the motion.
Counselors, Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing. One present, one absent.
Yep, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. One other item I wanted to bring up real quickly on the topic of appointments. We do have some openings on the Conservation Commission, on the Cable Commission. I think we need three members for each of those, as well as a member for the Planning Board. If you're aware of any interest or anybody in the public that would like to serve, please contact my office or contact one of the city councilors. We have some outstanding people serving now on the board. A couple have retired, a couple have moved away, and we want to fill those positions with quality people that care deeply for the city. And we'd love to have anybody who's interested volunteer and help out on those important boards. A lot of important work taking place. So, I did want to mention that. Counselors, have any ideas? Please let me know. But we do need two members for the Conservation Commission, three members for the Cable Commission, and I believe one member for the Planning Board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're on appointments, Counsel Sinowitz, can I have a motion under suspension of the rules to receive item 7B?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7B. So moved.
Counselors, hear the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. This is a -- requesting a Cable Commission alternate. Yeah. Counselor Turco.
Move to approve item 7B, the appointment of John Swanson to the Cable -- of 9 Welcome Street, PBD Mass, to the Cable Commission for a three-year term.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Counselor Turco. Roll call.
Counselors, Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing. One absent.
Thank you. We're going to take one more item out of order this evening. I'm going to jump to item 9D. Yes. And this is a special event application for PBD Main Streets, 24 Main Street, for Nightmare on Main Street on October 27th, 2016, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Julie, Ms. Daigle here from Community Development, but also in her capacity as a member of the Main Streets Organization to address the council if there are any questions on this Counsel Sinowitz, could I ask you to turn your microphone on? Thank you. Seeing none, is there a motion from the floor on item 9D? Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, move to receive and approve all papers being in order, item 9D.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Moving back to item 4A, would the clerk please read the notice to public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, September 29th, 2016, at 7:30 p.m. in the Franco-Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowes, PBD Mass, on the application from Stall USA Inc., 13 Corwin Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit to install a freestanding electronic message board sign with illuminated LED display for safety purposes. At said 13 Corwin Street, PBD Mass is filed in accordance with Section 6.1, 11.9, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councillor, Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Is the applicant here this evening? If you could please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Daly, representing Stall USA. I'm the operations manager at the facility, and we're submitting application for the safety sign.
Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, about a month ago, I went down and met with Jim. He was very nice to bring me in and show me the sign. I know that the application says 17 feet, six inches. It's not alarming, so that's with the building underneath, which is a pump house, that the sign will be situated on. It does not face any of the main streets. The only concern that I did have is I was at the ZBA meeting last week when the ZBA approved the variance for the sign, and your representative had stated they'd like to keep the sign on 24 hours a day. Typically, I wouldn't have an issue with that, but we don't know -- first of all, we have time constraints on the signs on Linfield Street with some of the businesses, and I don't want to create a problem for us that you have a 24-hour sign, and they don't. And also, I don't know what's going to take place at that fine property, if anything. There may at some point be residences in that area. So, I'd like to just be a little proactive on that. If it's not a problem for you, I would like to have a condition in the special permit that it's off at 11 o'clock at night and can come back on at the opening of your business in the morning. But you'd need to give me a specific time on that.
Yeah, the facility closes at 5:00 p.m. typically from truck traffic, and that's primarily what the sign is going in for. We see no reason why we couldn't put a timer on that to turn off at, say, 9:00 or 10:00 at night and then recome on around 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, that will exactly -- exact would be my condition, that we approve with the -- an off time of 9:00 p.m. and back on at 6:00 a.m.
Thank you, Counsel Turco. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, Counsel Manning-Martin.
Thank you. Through you to Counselor Turco. Could you tell me, Counselor Turco, how far back is it with the variance from -- this is behind the stone wood, right? Or is it to the side? Is it behind it? Is it face the street?
Mr. President, through you to Counsel Manning. Yes, it is behind the stone wood, on the same side of the street as the stone wood, further back on Corwin, almost directly across from the opening, the side opening to the LL Fine Building. It is -- there's no view from Linfield Street of the sign. I don't know the exact setback from the street, but...
Okay, so it's not facing Linfield Street?
No, it's actually facing Corwin at the entrance to the stall building where the trucks enter, the back left-hand side of the building. And I believe there's no colors to this sign. I should have been more specific. This sign is like an amber reading for the most part.
Yeah, it's going to be a light red amber color.
Right.
And maybe I missed it, but if your business is only open until 5:00, why does it need to be on until 9:00 p.m.?
That was suggested by the counselor, but we can certainly adjust it. We do have 24-hour coverage five days a week, except for Friday nights. So, we do have employees coming and going on three shifts. So, the intention is to give visibility not only to contractors, but to the employees on the site for changes in the information being communicated to people going on different shifts.
Okay. Thank you very much. Because I want, of course, your employees to be safe. And I understand that's the sole purpose of this reader board. So, absolutely, you need it, and I'm not objecting to that. My only concern, John, is, I'm sure you share, is it being on and facing the street and having the neighbors that face that area be affected. So, having not seen it, I'd like to -- because it's obviously not up, but I'd just be concerned. And it seems as though they're flexible. So, if you can perhaps put flexible language in there, it seems as though that they're flexible, that should it face out into the street in a manner that we're not anticipating, that it not be on even till 9:00? I'm just concerned that it may face and be on all night. I just want to have some language in there that we can restrict that if we need to.
Yeah. The angle of the sign, as I showed John when he came out, is going to be almost 45, facing towards inside our main building. So, it's almost completely shielded from Corwin Street itself. So, it's going to be very difficult for anybody coming down past the railroad tracks to even see it until they get down to our building.
Okay. Well, that's reassuring. So, if that is the case, then I'm less concerned that it's going to distract the neighbors. But if there could just be some type of flexibility in the language so that you can work with us, should it not pan out the way that you even anticipated, okay? But safety of the employees is essential, so I'm on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Manning-Martin. Other counselors? Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, I would like to add that language that Counsel Manning had mentioned. Matter of fact, just to make this easy, since everybody's in agreement, why can't -- we'll just make the sign off at 6:00 p.m. and back on at 6:00 a.m.? It's off of that 12-hour period, then we don't have...
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all.
Would you like to close the hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Counselors, hear the motion, close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, move to approve the application from Stall USA Inc., 13 Corwin Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit to install a freestanding sign, electronic message board with illuminated LED display for safety purposes. At said 13 Corwin Street, PBD Mass is filed in accordance with Section 6.1, 11.9, 15.7 of the PBD zoning board with one condition, the sign shall remain off between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Counselor Turco. Roll call.
Counselors, Mitsoulas.
Yep.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garavedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing. One absent.
Thank you, Counselors.
Item 4B is a recessed public hearing, so we're going to waive the reading of the notice. This is a junk dealer's license for extras for creative reuse at 58 Pulaski Street. Is there a representative here from the petitioner? If you could please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Let us know what you want to do.
My name is Jocelyn Ami Testa. I live at 77 Edge Hill Road in Lynn.
Could you just give us an overview of what you'd like to do?
Oh, so Extras for Creative Reuse is a 35-year-old organization. We're a nonprofit that works with businesses and manufacturers to redistribute the goods that they no longer need or want to schools and cultural organizations.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, Counsel Mitsoulas.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, they're looking to -- well, they are renting a space at 58 Pulaski Street. It's a small stall, and she really described what she's looking for. I had a letter here from Kathy Wells on 22 Westview Circle. I'd like to receive, Mr. Chairman, for the record.
Counselors, you heard the motion for late receipt. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Mitsoulas.
And I also got a call from her and a call from Counselor Toomey, who were not opposed to it, but they were curious. And Kathy Wells asked me to restrict their hours of any deliveries going to their place of business from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and if that's okay with you.
Yeah, we're only open Tuesday through Saturday from, yeah, from 10:00 to 5:00.
That's fine, but no deliveries between 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Other counselors? Seeing none, Counsel Mitsoulas.
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, you hear the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Mitsoulas.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve a junk dealer's license for extras for creative reuse doing business at 58 Pulaski Street with the hours of delivery being from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Hours of delivery. Counselors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors, Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Thank you.
Item 5, reports to committee. Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, excuse me. We had a presentation this evening by members of the Community Development Group, Karen Canard and Stacy Burnson, about housing development incentive program, plan, and zone. Every counselor spoke on the matter. The mayor spoke about his support for it. There was a motion by Counsel Walsh to approve the community development for the proposed -- to approve, excuse me, the proposed housing development incentive program, plan, and zone, and the motion passed forward to one. So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. So, to move this forward, we need to put this to a vote of the full council, the same motion?
Yes, please.
Counsel, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors, Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
No.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to one. One absent.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Motion orders and resolutions, Counsel Mitsoulas.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go to item 8D, motion to receive and approve subject to all papers being in order.
Counselors, hear the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Mitsoulas.
And I have no motions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mitsoulas. Counsel Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to the Department of Public Works and find out the status of the motion I made on Rio Road. Looked like there was a broken water line in the street, and it was flooding, and they were going to put an underground scope in there to see what was going on. And no one has responded back to me, so I'd like to find out the status of that. So moved.
Counselors, hear the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Sinowitz.
It's not a motion, but I would like to thank the Board of Health, the Building Inspector's Office, and the PBD Police Department for the work they did on the vapor store. I don't know if the council was aware, but there were some pretty severe violations, and the petitioner was a little belligerent. So, we was given a cease and desist order, and we had to have two police officers and Board of Health and Building Inspector's Office go over there. And got contentious, but at this point, I think the landlord booted him out, and there was an incident, but he's out, and hopefully, that's the last receiver of the vapor store in Ward 6. But they did a great job handling it, very professional, so I want to thank them all. Lastly, I want to make a motion not to receive item 8A. I can't tell you how strongly I disagree with this, and I don't even want to receive it. So moved.
Counsel Walsh.
With all due respect to my colleague from Ward 6, I don't know how we do that. You can disagree if you want. However, if the communication has been sent, I think we have an obligation to receive it. So, I would object to your motion.
Through the chair.
Counsel Sinowitz.
You're probably right, but it's just my -- I'm just so taken back by this opinion. And it is an opinion, and it doesn't mean it's right. It's his opinion. And I'll rescind the motion. I'm trying to make a point. Reluctantly make a motion to receive item 8A.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Sinowitz.
And, oh, I forgot. Under suspension of rules, move to receive item 9A, move approval, all papers being in order. So moved.
Counselors, hear the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Sinowitz.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sinowitz. And thank you, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Walsh.
I have no motions, Mr. President. I have no motions, Mr. President.
Thank you again. Counsel Manning-Martin?
No motions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Manning-Martin. Counsel Charis.
Thank you, President. I would like to make a motion to have a crosswalk repainted going across, in front of 157 Lowell Street. There was a crosswalk there earlier before the paving. The sign is still located on the pole indicating a crosswalk. I'd just like to have the lines painted across the street. It doesn't have to be before the parade either. Thank you. So moved.
Counselors hear the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Charis. Counsel, thank you, Counsel Charis. Counsel Sasla.
Thank you. Under suspension of rules, like to receive item 8E, refer to Municipal Safety Committee for their next regularly scheduled meeting.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Counsel Sasla. Yes, I'd like to also make a motion that the forestry department make a site visit to 34 Pine Street. I believe there's a tree that's extremely close to the roadway that's getting hit by side mirrors. If they could go out there, take a look at it, and make an assessment. Thank you.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sasla. Counsel Turco.
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve all papers being in order, item 9C.
Counselors hear the motion.[1646.83]